Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, March 6, 2018 Pickwa City Commission meeting. I now call us to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner's vote is absent this evening.
I move to excuse Commissioner's vote from the meeting tonight.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Commissioner's vote is excused. And now we move to announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? If not, we will move to our consent agenda.
There's one item on the consent agenda tonight. It's the approval of the minutes from the February 20, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda has passed, and now we move to old business. And we have one item, which is ordinance number 3-18. It is a second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 55 Stormwater Management of the Pickwa Municipal Code.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This ordinance before you is a second reading tonight. This is in response to the NPDES permit the city holds from the EPA. And that permit has certain requirements for stormwater. The proposed changes in this ordinance are a reflection specifically of those permit requirements. You will see several changes to the definitions section. The primary change is that the permit actually requires there be an illicit discharge section, which was not in the ordinance before. The permit also requires there to be erosion plans under construction for projects of one acre or more, and then post-construction plans as well. So those sections are added. And then the third change to the ordinance that is significant is that it takes a violation of this ordinance out of the criminal realm and makes it a civil penalty.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance?
How many in the past recent past three to five years, how many violations of residential houses have been found?
I don't have an exact number, but I'm gonna venture none, only because this program, even though the permit's been in place for a long time, the stormwater position and department or program, if you will, isn't old at all. It was newly created. And so Devin Alexander was the first person in that position. And his focus at the time was building the education requirement of the program. So we really, until we just got our stormwater coordinator, Skye, that we're able to actually go out there and get violations, look at different pollutants. I know, I'm not saying Devin didn't do that.
No.
But really, when he would go out, it was because somebody saw something, there was a complaint, whereas now it's a little bit different focus, and as well as making sure we comply with the permit requirements.
So you don't know if we've currently found any violations?
Right now, I'm not. Nothing's been brought to my attention of a violation, although there have been letters sent out when it's been seen to correct the problem.
I think we know there are some, but I think that's part of why doing this.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, when we have a rain event and all the people that put their sun pumps in and pump out of their yard into the street, that's not considered illicit discharge, is it?
Not to my knowledge. The definition is very specific. And the definition actually comes straight from the stormwater permit?
I think it's more related to industrial, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, alright.
It does relate under 55.08 to any property. But it would have to meet those requirements to violate the permit. That's the purpose of the definition in the section.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Do we have any questions from the public on this ordinance? Not this will stand as our second reading of ordinance number 3-18. And now we move to our new business, which is ordinance number 4-18. This is a first reading.
An emergency ordinance amending Section 94.01 of the Pickwa Code relating to green fees for the municipal golf course.
I'll call on Ms. Holtzapple for the staff report.
Thank you. We are requesting commission consideration of a minimal increase of golf cart rental fees. The golf cart rental for nine and 18 holes would be increased a dollar for each round. The increase would be approximately $10 increase for the nine or 18-hole value coupon. With this increase, cart fees are still very compatible to other courses in the area. This slight increase is expected to generate between $6,000 and $8,000 annually, with the 2017 cart rental fee being just over $80,000 per year. Cart fees have not been changed in several years, in fact, back to 2009, and this slight increase would help offset part of the leasing of new carts proposed later tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance?
Why is this an emergency ordinance?
We were hoping to get it passed as soon as possible. The golf course opened the 1st of March, but you could certainly take it under consideration and pass it at the next meeting.
And in my understanding, that we have not raised the rate since 2008, is that correct?
2009, yeah.
2009, okay. Any other questions from the commission?
I'd like to see this go one more meeting.
Excuse me?
I'd like to see this go one more meeting.
One more meeting?
Yeah.
I would too. I want to hear from people that actually go out there and golf and what their feelings are on it. That's why I'm curious.
Alright, do we have any comments from the public on this ordinance?
Where does the money go that...
If you want to come up and actually, that's fine. You'll state your name and your address.
Paul Crock, 824 Linden Avenue. And where does the money go that they gain off this course? Who does it, where does that go to?
It stays right in the golf course.
Just...
For operations, yes.
Okay.
If not, this will stand as our first reading of this ordinance. And we will move now to resolution number R-37-18.
A resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Century Equipment Incorporated and VGM Financial Services for the lease of the new golf carts for the Aqua Hills Golf Course.
Ms. Holtzapple.
Thank you. We're proposing to lease 36 new 2018 Club Cart Golf carts for an amount not to exceed $34,302.96 annually over the next four years. Our current carts, which date back to 1995, 2000, and 2006, have surpassed their useful life and need major expensive maintenance and repairs, as well as battery replacements. Century Equipment's offer, after proper advertisement and bidding, include full-term, four-year warranties on the batteries, the chargers, the canopy systems, seats, and electrical components. They also offer the most generous trade-in allowance for our older carts. We're trading in over 41 carts for a trade-in value of over $43,000. If approved tonight, the new cart should be in place in early April, allowing for optimal play this season.
Any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance?
Why the lease option instead of buying outright?
Well, if you refer to the option A and BAG, the option to lease is less than an option to buy. About $156,700 to buy versus $137,200 to lease. And during the four-year period, that lease, for the majority, is under a four-year warranty. We found that after that four-year period, we have to replace almost 100% of the batteries. Each cart has six batteries, and that replacement cost is about $1,000 for each cart. As well as, after that period of about the four to five years, we start seeing major maintenance issues and replacements required. This year, on our carts alone, if we would not be replacing them, we would probably be putting over $25,000 in the cart equipment repairs and battery replacement.
Well, in looking at Exhibit A, obviously, the $43,000 is a much better trade-in than the other options as well.
Yes.
So that's nice to see, getting something for those carts that were 1995 to 2006, yeah. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commission on this resolution? Do we have any comments or questions from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-37-18.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-38-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Walt Sweeney Ford Incorporated for a 2018 Ford F-450 extended cab truck with a heavy-duty stake bed platform for the power system.
Mr. Krieger will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As part of our vehicle, ongoing vehicle replacement program, we budgeted for and have identified a 2006 one-ton truck with a heavy-duty material bid on it for replacement this year. Bob Bowman worked with our, the city's purchasing, purchasing analyst, Beverly Outt, to specify and develop the bid documents, advertise, and receive bids. I think the documents were sent out to a dozen bidders. We received three bids. Only, the only bid that actually met the specifications for the vehicle was the one from Walt Sweeney Ford. And it ended up being actually a Ford F-450 as opposed to a 350. But the other two vehicles that were bid were actually four-door vehicles that make it very difficult for working in alleys and close tight areas. They have a much larger turning radius. So we're recommending that we move forward with the purchase from Walt Sweeney Ford as the only bid that met the power system specifications.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, is there gonna be any work lights mounted on this truck at all?
There are LED strobes that are, I think, integrally mounted in the bed that's installed on the one-ton truck, and I believe we have LEDs that are part of the front as well. I'm not sure if we have any flashing lights on top like we do the large bucket trucks, but these are the, this vehicle's typically the one that the crew foreman takes to the jobs, and they use it to transport transformers and large material.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-38-18.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-39-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the 2018 street resurfacing program.
Ms. Havenor will provide staff report.
Thank you. As we do each year, we go out for bids for our capital improvement resurfacing program. This year, two bids were received after competitive bidding, and the lowest bidder was Barrett Paving. Barrett has done quite a bit of work in this city. Typically, we only have two bidders that bid. Barrett did not do our program last year, but the year before they did. So we're very familiar with their work. We are doing quite a bit of, quite a few streets this year. We're concentrating mostly on the southwest portion of Pickwa. We try to follow the vector and energy where they come in and do all their work. We try to keep a year behind them, as well as keeping our paving in a similar area. It helps with the economy of scale as far as having to remobilize each time. So I have a list in your packet of the streets that will be resurfaced. The project right now has a completion date of, well, right now, we have to wait for the ADA ramps to go in, but once those are in, we're hoping that it will begin in early or mid-June, and if no later than the early, early July.
I would also like to mention that these are the streets that we contract out, but we do internal paving also, and we'll be doing Shawnee, Garbury, Garnsey, and sections of all streets that have really bad repairs needed, alleys for this year. So we've got quite a few of projects headed this way.
So more streets will be done?
Oh, yes. Great.
And I know there's a gentleman here that was asking about an alley in his neighborhood, so we will look into that as well, and as we look at our alleys, so. Anything else from our commission, the commission on this resolution? Do we have anything from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-39-18.
Seconded. Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-40-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to Grissom Construction LLC for the sidewalk ADA compliance program.
Ms. Havenor.
Thank you. This goes right along with our resurfacing project. Prior to resurfacing, we are required by the federal government to put in ADA-compliant handicap ramps at all of the intersections being resurfaced. After a competitive bid, six bids were received for this, the lowest bid being from Grissom Construction. Grissom has done quite a bit of work for the city. He's actually been the low bid the last couple of years. Does a great job, very conscientious on his work. And this has a completion date of June 4th. So again, hopefully, he'll get done weather-dependent, and we can begin the paving shortly thereafter.
Thank you. Anything from our commission on this resolution? Anything from the public on this resolution? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-40-18.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-41-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Lebanon Ford for the purchase of three Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles.
I'll call on Chief Jameson.
So, as part of our ongoing fleet replacement program, we would like to purchase three new police interceptor utility vehicles for our marked fleet. We're fortunate that we've been into, been able to stick with our strategic fleet replacement program long enough that the three cruisers were taken out of service, are still in good working order. We'll convert them over to unmarked usage and replace three 2003 Crown VIXs. So I would, we did bid this out, but as usual, the state bid contract came in much lower than any of the bids that we were able to obtain. We used the same bid specs for the bid that we put out. And so I'd respectfully request that you authorize the purchase of these cruisers from Lebanon Ford under the state bid.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, on the three vehicles that you're changing over to undercover cars or whatever, is there a fee for getting that? Do they strip all the equipment out of them?
Right, that'll be the next resolution, and that's why we included this in the, just one report that, because I know that question comes up every year. So we're trying to present both options, or both resolutions tonight. So the next resolution, would you like me to go ahead and address that?
No, wait for me.
Mike, want to get a vote? Do you want to get a vote on the first one, or go ahead?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for resolution number R-41-18.
I'll second it.
Did you have a question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was...
No, I made a motion.
You made a motion? Oh, we need to have public comment.
Alright.
I apologize, I apologize. Do we have any public comment on this resolution? If not, I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution number R-41-18, and I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-42-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to the K.E. Rose Company for purchase and installation of specialized equipment in the police vehicles.
Chief Jameson.
So we put out a bid for the upfitting cost for this project and had two responses. The lowest and best was K.E. Rose, who's been doing our work for several years now, and we're very happy with what they do. And actually came in under what it cost us last year, even though the scope of the work is a little bit more, because we'll need just a little bit of work done to those 2003 vehicles, Commissioner Martin, that were taken out of service. There are a few items that are gonna have to come out of those, and they will go into, there's gonna be a logistical nightmare of sorts as we get everything switched over, but they'll have to go into the cruisers that are coming out of service as marked vehicles. And we'll put some covert lighting in there and some things like that.
Now, do these also go through a body shop for paint and any type of repair it needs body-wise?
Yes, there will be some of that done, because we have markings on there. I think two of the cruisers are painted, and one of them are, is the, are wrapped. So we will get them into, convert that over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission on this resolution? Not, I will, anything from the public on this resolution? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-42-18.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. If you want to make public comment about anything that we have spoken about or something else, please come forward and state your name and your address.
Paul, you back, King Street. First of all, I enjoy this here. I learned a lot, because a lot of times I don't get up here. As far as the garbage, I think that was a great idea. Maybe we'll get some of these people that don't know how to put their trash in trash cans, might be a little easier. I think I'd like to see you guys go back and review some of the ordinances in Pickwa, because there's a lot of ordinance and it don't seem like there's a lot of pressure on people around here. I mean, I know you go after people that are, their houses and that, but I think you ought to look at some of the rental properties, because they're making a profit off of their rentals, and I've lived by one for four years now, and I haven't seen $5 put in the house. So I'd like to see you guys review some of your ordinances, because I learned a lot in this here, especially about broke-down and abandoned vehicles. Who is responsible for contacting people with these type of vehicles?
The police department does that.
I question that. I mean, they got enough on their plate. My personal opinion, I think the health department should be taking care of that. If they're taking care of homes, they're supposed to be, why they don't?
Yeah, and really, really, one of the reasons is because of the requirements that sometimes in the road situation has to be handled by police department rather than. There's always a little catch on...
Okay, I know who to call now, then. Alright, that's all I got, thank you.
And one thing, I will tell you that we are in the middle of going over our code and reinforcing that and remodeling it, if you will, so we are looking at some of these things that you're speaking about.
I'd like to see some public meetings or whatever, because I think you'd get a lot of feedback from citizens here.
Yeah, we do have some coming up.
I think coming up, in April, there is a week-long charrette working on the zoning ordinance and so forth.
Okay.
I want to say...
It's the 16th.
16th.
Yeah, the week of the 16th.
Week of the 16th.
Okay.
There'll be a lot of information coming out, but it's all designed for the public to come out.
Okay.
And have a lot of input into some of the issues and so forth that they see within the community.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, there's a public meeting that Monday at 6:00, which will be the kickoff of it, and then a variety of other things as well. So please come and share your thoughts. That would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comment?
Bradley Manger, Mountain Street, Pickwa. Usually I come up here to...
Hey, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That was a little annoying back there. Usually I come up here with a question or a comment, but I just want to share with you tonight a very positive experience that I recently had. I'd gotten in the mail about maybe a week and a half ago, a bill from the income tax department for the city income taxes that I owe this year. And I had been told by the people at the income tax office that I could pay those before April 17th. Well, the bill that I got said it was due March 12th. So I made a phone call to the tax office. And I have to tell you, I had did not have, I could not have had a more pleasant interaction. And I, that's too bad I didn't get the lady's name, because I would, I would want to mention her name personally, and I should have. I regret that I didn't. But her explanation was very, very good explanation that she gave. Apparently, they were sent out in error. So I just wanted to tell you that you have a very fine tax office, and my hat is off, if I may be permitted to do so, and no, I'm not supposed to address them directly, but I'd like to in this instance. Cindy, you have a very good group of people down there in your tax office, and you should be commended on the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
As I said before, I'm Paul Crock. I live on Linden Avenue in Pickwa. I've been here most of my life, other than 14 years, and I'm 67. But like I was telling the lady earlier, I don't see much change in this town. I mean, we're just sitting here, and we have nothing coming in. There's no new business. We're not prospering that way. We should be prospering that way. You've got Sydney booming, you've got Troy booming, and we're just sitting here, and we have nothing coming in for years. Other thing, like the gentleman just said, where's the ordinance on these vehicles that's sitting around in yard with a big camper that's going down into the dirt next to the alley? Isn't that supposed to be on a gravel pad or a cement pad? We got a house across the back of our alley, and I told her about the holes in it. There's a house on the corner of Brook there at the alley. That thing should be condemned. I mean, another neighbor across the alley, Tristle, Steve Tristle, he told me, he said he had somebody down here that was gonna be a new, new guy in town, and he wasn't gonna put up with it. Well, blah, blah, blah. I guess they did a little bit of improvements on a few windows and went around it, more riffraff in there, and then they were gone. So I'd just like to, like what he said, I'd like to see something done, more action taken. There's a vehicle sitting down on the street on Linden across from us. It's got a flat tire on it. I don't know if it's got the proper tags on it. That thing was new, it was a friend of ours, and it's just deteriorating. It's sitting underneath a pear tree there, and stuff's dropping on it, and squirrels and dropping stuff on it. It's just, it's just pathetic. And then the roundabout they're wanting to put out here to town, I don't see where we need that. Furthermore, you got trucks, it's gonna be going through there, big trucks, from Pickwa Minerals, from getting to industry products, PolySource. The trucks has got to come in somewhere. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alright, any other public comment this evening?
Josh Tedwell, 1409 Broadway. I was unrelated to the meeting today, but I was just letting you guys know that I applied for one of your board positions, and I look forward to maybe even possibly having the opportunity to be able to contribute my services and time for the community and good cause. I applied for the Downtown District Design Review Board. So hopefully, we'll see.
Thank you, thank you so much. That's what it takes to run our city, is citizens getting involved, so thank you very much. Anything else, public comment? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Just a couple items tonight. The, wanted to... The, wanted to congratulate Commissioner Vogt on being re-elected to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission's executive committee. He was on it and has been re-elected to it. We received good news that we've received some additional grants from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. As you know, the trail bridge near the power plant is not in very good shape, but we received authorization for nine hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars to replace that bridge. Funding will probably be in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, and also an additional three hundred and fifty thousand to renovate the Ohio-Indiana Trail Bridge, which is at Lock Nine Park, and we have a lot of work to do to that, to remove all the wood so we don't risk any fires anymore, and get it down to steel, and then handicap access for the West End. So those are important monies that will help us move those projects along, so. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Is that bridge down in south of town, is that going to go at Giles Park, or is it going to stay where it's at?
No, I think it'll be realigned, is to come out at Giles Park, so make it a lot more accessible, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, well, we will start with Commissioner Leeds. You have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I just want to wish Commissioner Vogt a speedy recovery. He had a procedure done, and I want him to get well and to come back, and I want to thank the youth that have come out tonight and attended the meeting. Looks like you're Boy Scout, alright. I didn't know if it was Weeblo's, but Boy Scouts, and we appreciate your attendance, and the positive comments that we're getting from citizens, we appreciate, so, and, and the volunteers that we're getting, we appreciate those as well. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Short?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Martin?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. The only thing other than also good wishes for Commissioner Vogt, he is home in recovery right now, so we give thanks for that. The Pickwa Central Intermediate School, their run club, their sixth-grade run club started today, and so I just encourage our citizens to be aware that you will see people running around the school for the next eight weeks as they prepare themselves for the 5K that they will do in May. It's a great, great community activity. There's many people that, I volunteered for the past few years and continued to do so. One of our police officers was there today, our fire department has helped, and it's a great way to bring our community together, to help these young people get active and get out and get moving. So just look for those kids as you see them running around the block, and you can give them a way to go as you, as you drive by. So that's all I have this evening. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.